The applicant has up to 30 minutes. Then each member of the public has up to five minutes. And if the applicant so wishes after public testimony, they have up to 15 minutes to rebut any, anything that came up in the public comment. So, one thing in that regard is I would ask that everyone direct their questions and testimony towards me and not the audience. And if nobody has any questions before we get going, I will get us into the first application. Seeing no questions, I'm gonna open up, variance 21-0002, I believe for the Roths. And this Zach Trevino, staff presenting?
Yes, good evening Planner Zach Trevino for the record. And I'm presenting a request for a 10-foot variance to the 25-foot front yard setback requirement on a lot in the restricted residential zone. The subject lot is located approximately three and a half miles northeast of Rathdrum along State Highway 41. The lot itself is along Shoreline Road on Lower Twin Lake. It's called Cochrane Lane. And it is part of a plat of 75 lots in that area, right next to the Twin Lakes Village Golf, Golf Club. And this is an aerial of the neighborhood. It's relatively flat. As you can see, the project site is triangular in shape. It is not itself a shoreline lot. It is on the east side of the road that runs along the shoreline there. Rice Road is the public road that extends from State Highway 41 to provide access to the site. And as you can see, it's immediately adjacent to the Twin Lakes Village Golf Club development, although it is not part of, of that plat. The project site is undeveloped. It is approximately 7,000 square feet, quite small, and it has direct access off of Cochrane Lane, which is a privately maintained road, although it is within a public right-of-way. And so the variance is a request measured from the edge of that right-of-way, which was platted with the original plat. One thing to note, just with this parcel map here, is that the lot is, is really the only triangular lot in the neighborhood. There are 75 lots and actually it's the southernmost lot of, of that plat. So everything south of it is not part of the Percy Cochrane Beach plat. As mentioned, it is within the restricted residential zone, which has a 25-foot front yard setback requirement for all structures. What the applicant is proposing is to build a garage structure to serve a residence which they own west of Cochrane Lane on another lot. They would use it for personal storage. The whole area is restricted residential, except for a portion that's rural, just to the south. An elementary school is located in that rural area. The applicant's site plan shows how the garage would fit on that lot. Part of the reason for the request, in fact, the main reason is, is the shape of the lot, as well as just the minimal size. The resulting buildable area is quite small, and that is what the applicant is, is claiming presents undue hardship. Without this variance, this 10-foot variance, the triangle area that would be available to build in is, it would be limiting to the point where they wouldn't be able to build a garage that could accommodate their needs. You'll note that because it is a triangular lot, the north and east sides are side yards, so that they have a 10-foot setback requirement. The applicant provided a simple sketch elevation of what the building would look like. It would be a straightforward personal storage building with a, with a garage entrance, a door on the side and, and some windows. The floor area inside would, would be a single room, and it would be used for vehicle and equipment storage. This is an overview of the site, went, went out one time with, with snow on the ground in winter, and then again in spring. The top left shows the vegetation along the east side, whoops, the east side of the, of the parcel, this is actually facing south, and you can see it's quite thick and provides good visual screening. The top right shows where the building would go. This is actually a view from the lot immediately to the north. There's no physical barrier between lots, so going out on site, it can easily, it's easy to mistake this lot as one with the, one to the north, but two separate lots. The bottom left shows the approach on the Cochrane Lane. It has direct access, and they would construct a simple driveway right onto that road there. And then the bottom right is, is what it looks like without snow on the ground, just a, a flat grassy area. So due to the topography, slope does not play an aspect in, in undue hardship. It's purely lot size and irregular shape. We did run this by the agencies, and, and they didn't have any concerns. The only agency that really provided any comments was the Fire District, which approved it as long as Cochrane Lane remains unobstructed and that fire safety requirements are met. The Building Division, of course, noted that a building permit will be required. One thing that is notable about this site is because there is no primary use of this lot, it would require a special notice permit if this variance were to be approved, at which time agencies and the public would, would be consulted on the actual proposed structure once again. And so this variance is kind of the prerequisite to that special notice permit. We did receive two comments, only one is reflected in the staff report. The other one was received yesterday. It was in opposition to the request and cited the neighborhood character, as well as the visual impact of a storage building in this location. And that person was given the information for, for this hearing, given that it came in after deadline, just to make sure they were aware of, of this hearing occurring today. In staff's opinion, the request is reasonable because the lot is quite small, to the point where really using it for any other type of structure would be very difficult, if not impossible. And the actual variance request would not seem to have a negative impact on the actual roadway. It's a very low-speed road, it's quite a narrow road surface, but even if the variance were granted, the structure would still be adequate distance from the road so as to not obstruct traffic or site distance, emergency access, et cetera. And so staff does feel that there is undue hardship based on those factors. It helps that it is the only triangular lot in the 75-lot plat. It, you know, it seems adequate to, to warrant a variance, given that it's not like its neighbors in that sense. And furthermore, it does seem to be the minimum request necessary to, to get adequate use out of this site. And so with that, this is just a rendering of what it approximately may look like, just with an aerial, maybe not exact. Our, our parcel boundaries tend to be illustrative, but that's just a rough idea. And I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Yeah, the only one I have for you Zach is if, you know, there's, if there's been any other variances granted in the immediate vicinity?
There have been a few in the immediate area. Not, most of the lots along Percy Cochrane Beach are developed, some remain undeveloped. And there, there have been a few granted on those lots. Notably, there was one to the north on Cochrane Lane, where a front yard setback variance was granted. If I pull up just this, you can kind of see the site plan on the right for that variance. In this case, the, the lot had topography issues, rocky boulders, vegetation that caused this to be necessary. It wasn't size or shape that caused this to be, to have undue hardship, but it was granted in 2017. And then there was another variance granted in 2001 for a lot, not on the same street, but within, you know, 200 to 300 feet of this parcel. It was a side yard setback variance, and kind of unrelated in terms of lot characteristics. But other than that, there, there really aren't a whole lot of variances in, in this area, just a couple.
Okay, thanks Zach.
Thank you.
All right, and I believe the applicants are here. One or both of you are welcome to speak, of course, but you do get up to 30 minutes for your applicant's presentation, so.
Okay, thank you Carl.
You're not required to take all 30 minutes, though.
I hope not, I don't need to. Again, my name is Travis Roth, my wife is here with me, and we are making this variance So background here, showing kind of the plot map. Our, our primary residence, our home is on Lot 7, which is indicated here. We lived there for 11 years, and we would like to build a garage on the lot that we own across the street, Lot 75. And so while, while visiting with the draftsman and, and starting to work on that, we really ran into, you know, some of these issues with being able to, to build a, a practical-size garage with the existing setbacks. So that kind of brings us to this variance request, which Zach has, has described for us. And I think that pretty self-explanatory, this front setback, what's drawn here is a 15-foot setback, that's if the variance was granted. This 25 is what is currently required, so kind of just showing how that would lay out. I think it is relevant, and I'll kind of make this point a little bit later. The existing road, so the setback is from the property line. The existing road does sit well back from the property line, so I just, I think that's a bit relevant to, you know, the, any concerns with blocking traffic, at least with the existing road where it's at. There's an additional, I think it's 15 to 20 feet.
15, okay. That was, that was gonna be a question I had for you.
So this is a picture from the road. I think we've seen these similar pictures, so I'll just kind of breeze through there. The structure itself would sit right here. Zach showed the vegetation on the side, so as you approach, you approach from the right as you enter Cochrane Lane, which is a dead-end road, as, as you approach, there's actually some nice vegetation that would actually serve as a blind to this garage. So I think that it, you know, live, having lived there in the neighborhood for 11 years, we want to make sure that we're preserving, it's, it's a nice little neighborhood. We don't want to build something ugly that, that we wouldn't like to look at. And so I think just because of the approach, it actually sits quite nicely that the garage would sit behind quite a bit of vegetation and wouldn't be significantly visible. This is looking from the back towards the road. This one I did want to point out, so with, if the variance is approved, these, these two cones right here, that marks the front of the garage, just to kind of give a sense of, that's, that's with a 10-foot variance on the setback, just to give a visual of, you know, there's, there's a lot of room here. And again, it's gonna be nicely as you're driving down this road, it's gonna sit primarily behind this vegetation. So as far as the criteria for variance, the undue hardship, I think one of the key pieces is that it's an irregularly shaped lot. The triangle does create some challenges, and in particular, the front yard setback has a undue proportional impact because it, it does, it's the long side of the triangle. Most, all of the other lots in the plot are rectangles, so that front 25-foot setback represents roughly 20% of the lot, the total lot space. In our case, the front yard setback represents, excuse me, 53% of our lot. So over half of our lot is inside of this 25-foot front yard setback. So that's, that's really what we believe is creating the, the undue hardship. The variance not in conflict with the public interest, so I, some words here, just kind of describing the, that not only is the, there would, there'd still be 15 feet from the front of the building, but there's an additional several, I think I listed here, 25 feet is what, is what I measured from the property line to the existing road. So this is not gonna create any safety or parking or traffic issues, we believe. And then, of course, as Zach highlighted, the eight, six public agencies have reviewed and commented on this. So in summary, you know, this variance is requesting this front yard setback, a variance of 10 feet resulting in a 15-foot front yard setback. We feel like we've demonstrated the hardship based on the shape of the lot, and then no conflict with the public interest, so.
Okay, just to, I believe I saw on the application, the footprint is gonna be like roughly 1,000 square feet?
Yeah, approximately, 1,000 square feet, that's right.
Okay, I have no additional questions for you. If your wife would like to comment or speak, that is her prerogative?
Yeah, no additional comments.
Okay, that was all the questions I have for you, so I will, Zach, can you check and see if there's anybody who's connected via Zoom? Please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Doesn't look like it. This is staff, and that's my desktop.
Okay, with that, it is 6:15, and I'm assuming there's no one else from the public here who wishes to comment on this? All right, with that, it's 6:15, and I'm gonna close the public hearing for variance 21-0002, and we will move on to the next application. Thank you very much. So at 6:16 PM, we will call to order the hearing for variance 21-0005. Gregory M. Julie Hazen, oh, Hazen Oral?
Hassan Oral.
Hassan. My apologies. All right, so we have Vlad, go ahead.
Good evening, for the record Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. This is a request by Mr. and Mrs. Hassan Oral for a variance to the front and side yard setbacks in the restricted residential zone. The subject parcel of land is located on the west side of Corlaine Lake, in, in the southern portion of Cootney County, in the Sun of Bay area. It is a waterfront piece of property, and it has an existing cabin and a shed on permanent These are some of the photos of the property in question. The way, topographically speaking, this property has an upper bench on the east side of the property where the private access road is, and then it slopes down towards the lake, and then there's a more flat area near the waterfront location. The applicant's architect contacted me early on for a pre-application meeting to discuss the possibility of the two variances that I mentioned. And what we discussed early on was, in my view, based on the photos that we had, historical photos from the Assessor's Office, this portion of the property is relatively flat. So my main question was, as you know, for any variance that we process, there has to be an undue hardship. So what the architect advised me on is that they would like to place a garage in location where it would not impede their current access to the staircase, which leads to the cabin. And what they advised me on is if they were to maintain a 10-foot side yard setback from the northern property line, it would leave a four-foot walkway for them to, you know, pull up, transport their personnel belongings, and walk down the stairs. And they advised me that that was not a sufficient area for them to load, you know, load stuff on and off from their vehicle or from their cabin, based on the location of the cabin, as well as the shed. And I asked, well, can you move the shed? Well, the shed is on permanent concrete foundation. And the other issue, I asked them, well, okay, that makes sense. Why would you need a variance from the, from the front? Because you could pull the structure all the way up to the edge of this bench, and then you would be able to retain a 25-foot buffer. Well, what the applicant advised me on is that they have a wellhead in this location, and that precludes them from shifting this garage. So basically, what they are attempting to do in this case is work with the existing conditions on site in order to fit their garage. So I advised them that I would take in the application as we're required to, and then I would conduct a site visit, to make sure that, in my view, as, as a planner, that this structure would not obstruct anybody else that is adjoining this property. And in viewing this neighborhood, I did not see any other structures in close proximity to this road. That doesn't mean that this is an issue, just, to me, it just says that there's really nothing that would create an undue, or I'm sorry, a negative impact on the adjoining proper, properties. And therefore, I believe that based on the existing conditions of where the shed is, where the staircase is, the need for transporting personal belongings from the area where the vehicles will be parked or where the garage is, to their cabin, makes sense in this case. These are some of the renderings of the proposed garage. It will be approximately 720 square feet, and the parcel size in question is quarter acre in size. We did solicit comments from agencies with jurisdiction, being that the property is located off of private road, we did not solicit comments from the Highway District in question. The reason this is before you today, because the code does state that variances from a private road do not have to go through a public hearing, they can go through an administrative review and be reviewed by staff and approved by the director. In this case, because the applicant is seeking a variance to the side yard, which does require a public hearing, the more stringent regulations would apply. So there's no opposition. Early on, as you read the record, there were some questions with regard to the location of the drain field and whether or not it would be in conflict with the proposed location of the shop. We were advised that only a distribution line is located on site, and that the shared common community drain field is off-site. Therefore, it's not an issue for PGD, as well as the tribe that raised the question. We did receive one comment in support of the application, and staff's position is that the request is minimal in nature, and given the existing conditions and location of, of existing features on site, the applicant does have an argument for undue hardship. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, so I saw your comments about the community drain field. And then just real quick, if you go back to the site plan real quick, just a couple follow-up questions on some of the measurements. So the space now in between the, the garage shop and the shed is?
It's approximately nine feet. And I forgot to mention that they're seeking a five-foot side yard variance, as you have read in report, as well as a seven-foot four variance from the front property line, which would place the facade of the garage seven foot eight, 17 foot eight from the private road.
Seventeen, 17 feet eight inches from the edge of the roadway?
Edge of the property line.
Edge of the property line.
Yes, sir. The road itself is not well-defined, it's, it's like a dirt road, and so it's hard to tell where the actual roadway is, but in this case, I don't see that being problematic because there's really very minimal amount of traffic there.
Okay. All right, thank you Vlad. All right. I just heard your name, and it already escapes me. Mr. Hazenor?
Yes.
Hazenor? All right, it's your turn, you have up to 30 minutes to make your presentation.
I'm not sure that I have a, a lot to add to what Vlad had to say, he did a good job. The lot lines, if you have that, there you go. Where it's showing 17-foot dimension there on the setback, the property line is actually set well inside of the, the parking area. The, it jogs out there at the center of the, the road, and then it seems to jog back into our, where there's just parking already. And so that it's really not impeding on the road itself, or, you know, any travel to and from on that road, that's already part of what's established as a parking area, and it's gravelled area right now. The side dimension again, as he, he mentioned, the five-foot setback from the side, so we can get a vehicle down there to unload and, and carry our groceries and goods into the house and back. And that's about all I have to add.
Okay, just to double down on that point, so I'm seeing the kind of protrusion of your property line, but the 17 feet and change is from the, is the measurement there?
Yeah, this is the property line here, and then it, it actually jogs up to the center of the road. I think that at one point, there was some lot line adjustments that were made, and, you know, well before we had purchased it, where it's jogged back and it's still left at 17 foot, that portion of the property hadn't been outline adjusted.
Okay. Do you have a, like a HOA or, or anything like that? Your, who, how is the road maintained?
It's privately, it, it's just a private gravel road, and I actually bring in buckets of gravel and fill in holes every once in a while.
All right. You don't have any agreement with your neighbors or anything for that?
No.
Okay. Let me double-check my notes and see if I have any questions for you. Yeah, I think that was all the questions I had in regards to this application, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public who have, who are here with regards to this application? Or anyone connected via Zoom, Zach?
Same person, Chris.
All right. With that, then at 6:26 PM, I will call to close the hearing for variance 21-0005. All right, and with that, I will get us going into our third application of the evening. We have MSP 20-0002 for the Hoodoo Valley North, requested by JB Dodge Company LLC, and we have Vlad here to present on the application. Go ahead Zach, or Vlad, apologies.
Good evening, once again, for the record Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. As you just stated, this is a request for a major subdivision by JB Dodge Company LLC. The subject property is located on the north side, on the north side of Cootney County, just south of Highway 54 and just east of Ramsey Road. The property in question gains access via two newly constructed and dedicated public roads, which are located within the most recently recorded minor subdivisions. The two access points to the plat are from Pulaski Road, which is connecting to Ramsey Road to the east, as well as Archer Road, which connects the property south of, of the subject site to Ramington Road. The request in this case, as you can see, based on the aerial overlay, the property is fairly level. It has been recently logged, but it does have significant amount of vegetation on site, and therefore, based on our assessment, it is considered to be part of the Wui, Wildland Urban Interface area, which requires per code that the applicant submit a wildfire mitigation plan prior to final plat recordation. The specifics of this request are as follows. The, the property is owned rural and does have a density of one dwelling per five acres. The comp plan designation is country and does allow for residential subdivisions. The request is for a phased 66-lot residential subdivision with one utility tract. It will be located over 335 acres, and access, as I just stated, will be off of, excuse me, off of Archer on the south end, and Pulaski on the west side of the property. The applicant is proposing individual wells for each one of the parcels, as well as a, an individual septic and drain field for each lot. Each phase pursuant to our code will have to include a minimum of 10 lots, and I believe the applicant has met that requir, requirement based on the preliminary layout. These are some of the photos of the property in question. The, the top-left photo shows the property along Highway 54, but it does not gain access off of 54. And then this photo in, on, in the middle on the bottom shows Highway 54 facing different direction, and then the remaining photos show some of the existing vegetation on site that was recently logged. During the agency comment period, we solicit comments from a list of agencies that are listed on this slide. One of the biggest concerns that we had was a letter that we received from the Highway District. Early on in December of last year, the Highway District submitted a lengthy letter itemizing at least eight or nine concerns that we, as a department, have to analyze whether they are concerns that can be mitigated through conditions of approval, or are open-ended issues that must further be revisited and addressed by the applicant before we can schedule the project before the hearing examiner. And so in discussion with the applicant, as well as the Lakes Highway District official, And so, in discussion with the applicant, as well as the Lakes Highway District official, we concluded that a number of items from that letter, I believe it dates back to December twentieth of last year, did have some open-ended issues that I, myself, including the rest of our department, felt could not be resolved if we didn't move forward with a public hearing at that time. So, the applicant was advised to go back to the drawing board and address some of the major concerns, which were the design of the interior roads, as well as the traffic impact study that would analyze the trips in and out of the subdivision and the impact and adjoining intersections that serve this subdivision. The applicant had prepared, um, a traffic impact study, as well as redesigned the layout of the, uh, plat. Some of the significant changes that they did is they extended the, uh, this road so that it abuts these, this property directly to the east, as well as extend this area or this road here to the north. And what the code states is if there is an ability to provide, um, access to the adjoining parcels of land for contiguous, um, roads in the future, if needed, then that should be contemplated as part of their request. Those are the only two significant changes that I saw. Mr. Ditman, the engineer on the project, can further elaborate if I missed something when he presents. The second letter that we received from the Highway District, which was in spring, I believe, in April of this year, um, basically stated that the applicant is working with the Highway District, and that the focal point of their letter was that they will be required to enter into a road development agreement, which basically puts specific sideboards on the improvements necessary to meet, um, the Highway District requirements. And I felt, as a planner assigned to this case, that as long as the Highway District, can confirm at a final plat stage that the improvements or the design criteria for complying with associate Highway District standards has been met or will be met through appropriate bonding, that that was the leverage that the Highway District had, as well as the county, to confirm that this could be accomplished at final plat review. So, the preliminary approval basically says, yes, we have all these items that needed to be addressed, and it was an early-on, open-ended letter, but the subsequent letter further clarified that it will be addressed through this road development agreement. This does not happen very often, but it does happen where we, um, rely on the, on the Highway District, and the Highway District is required by state law to sign off on the final plat, and therefore, that leverage there is, uh, is a, um, is, I guess, a good argument for us to move forward and conclude that this is a sufficient application to be heard tonight. The remaining agencies really didn't have any issues. The applicant will be, of course, required to submit a, um, a set of CCNRs that addresses wildlife, um, uh, language submitted by Idaho Department of Fish and Game. They will be required to enter into a, um, a solid waste or secure refuse collection agreement, uh, which I believe they preliminary did submit, and it's part of the record. The remaining agencies, like P G D and Fire District, have their standard language that, you know, they need to, uh, address prior to plat recordation or prior to building permits. It's interesting that this project received very little, uh, public input, we have only one comment in support. And staff's position is that this proposal is consistent with a number of recent minor subdivisions that have occurred in close proximity to this project. In fact, I was the planner, along with some other planners, that worked on a number of these applications in the recent year or two. And so, this proposal to create additional five-acre lots through the major subdivision process is no different than multiple minor subdivisions. So, the request is consistent and compatible with the request or with the, um, area, uh, development, and as long as the applicant can comply with the, uh, conditions of approval set forth in this, in the staff report, we believe that it's a, it's a good project. I stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Yeah, that was a good segue. I had a couple of questions I was gonna ask you about, um, looked like there's some newer developments in the area, especially at the corner of Ramsey and Remington.
Yes, sir.
So, you said those were, um, there was a few minor subdivisions that were approved within the last year or two?
In fact, there were probably a dozen or so. And they have all occurred through the, uh, the first step was that, first of all, this parcel, this section, was one of very few remaining sections that were undeveloped in the area. This is something that I observed, as well as what the Idaho Department of Fish and Game official stated. What the applicant has done, or other applicants, um, have done, is they exercised the twenty-acre exemption and then pursued minor subdivisions with, which the code allows, but it has become over the course of the last few years, an issue with both our department and the Highway District, so the applicant took, you know, a better approach of just doing a big master plan of a major subdivision to address this, um, ongoing issue.
Great, and while I have you, let me double-check my notes.
Sure.
Okay, uh, thanks, Vlad. All right, now we'll bring it up to the, I forget, and when you come up, please state your, uh, name for the record, please.
You bet. Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, one twenty-sixth East Poplar Avenue in the great city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Evening, Mr. Grandruth, how are you doing tonight?
Very good, thank you.
Good, nice to meet you. Again, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, representing, uh, both the JB Dodge family and Copper Basin Construction, who is the developer, the Dodge family is the land owner, uh, as Vlad had indicated. Uh, we have approximately three hundred and thirty, let's call it three hundred and thirty-six acres, it's three hundred and thirty-five point nine, but we'll call it three thirty-six acres. We're looking to develop sixty-six lots.
Before you proceed, would you mind indicating where you put the...
I, but it should be open. So, I drug it right here.
Got it, thank you.
Technicalities. There you go. You're good, go to the next one. Oh, this one works, perfect. Okay, so again, three hundred and thirty-six acres, sixty-six lots, uh, Highway fifty-four here, Ramsey Road and Remington Road. Rural zoning, so five-acre lot minimum is acceptable. The comp plan designates it at country, country allows for, actually encourages and promotes residential subdivisions, uh, such as this. Jumping ahead a little bit, you had asked about some of these surrounding subdivisions, so same, uh, developer and same land owner owned most of that property, and so we proceeded several years ago with the start of some of these minor subdivisions, uh, as the market was ramping up to kind of see where the flavor was for these five-acre parcels, and obviously the demand is huge for five-acre parcels, and we learned that a year or so ago, and so we started working diligently with, with staff, as Vlad had indicated, and with, most importantly, Lakes Highway District, which was our, I don't want to use the word obstacle, but it was our biggest obstacle to get over, to make sure they were comfortable with what we were presenting from, from a traffic and transportation standpoint. So, we've been working on this project for several years, it's obviously a two thousand and twenty project, so, um, uh, it's been an ongoing project. We've done, as I said, we've been working with the Highway District, we've done traffic impact studies, we've, uh, met numerous times with the Highway District, even with their subconsultant, who they hired to review our traffic impact study to mitigate some of the impacts. Some of the issues, and Vlad touched on a few of them, that changed from the original subdivision submittal that we had. Obviously, we don't own this piece here, this, I believe, is a tree farm right now, but the concern was providing adequate connectivity to that if in the future that property were to develop. Obviously, the state is not going to allow them access to Highway fifty-four, um, for obvious reasons, so it would be a landlocked parcel, so we wanted to make sure that they had adequate, uh, connectivity. We also, uh, contemplated the idea of making sure, uh, that there was adequate access to these parcels, and this map doesn't show it, but there's a, there's a street here, and these are developed as five- and ten-acre parcels already, and so there was no need really to extend those, those streets over because they already had access, sufficient access from existing, uh, infrastructure. So, again, back and forth with the Highway District a little bit, uh, we do believe we've satisfied their concern, they've submitted a letter that says, yes, they think we can move forward now. Uh, obviously, there's still a few hurdles to jump through with them, but nothing that we can't get through, uh, as we go through this process. We also did a groundwater quantity report and study because we are proposing individual wells, so we hired a hydrogeologist who went out, uh, did some, uh, monitoring of some existing wells in the area, actually flow-tested a couple of wells, prepared a very thorough report, uh, demonstrating that there is adequate capacity out there for individual wells on all of these lots, and you should have a copy of that in the, in the file as well, I believe. Uh, sixty-six lots plus one utility lot, I'll explain the utility lot, so up here, you can kind of see it in this corner, is a very small, uh, utility lot, it's obviously less than the five-acre minimum, it's not a residential lot, it's not a buildable lot. There's an existing well, domestic well on that lot that serves some of these properties over here, so we're gonna reserve that as, as a utility lot, which is allowed by the code, it will be dedicated to the HOA for maintenance, ongoing maintenance of, of the facilities that are in there. Uh, again, it's not a buildable lot because it doesn't meet the five-acre criteria, but it will be a legal lot so that we can reserve it for the utility.
And I apologize, can you point to where that was again? I was looking down.
It's, it's right here in the corner.
Okay.
There are two accesses, so again, the state is obviously not gonna allow us to have access up on Highway fifty-four. So, we have two accesses, right here, we have Pulaski, which is built from about here to here, uh, Lakes Highway District Road, uh, and then also Archer Road is built to about here, Lakes Highway District owned, operated, maintained road, so there'll be two public accesses to the property. You can see, we'll connect those, and then, uh, I would assume if this property were developed, obviously, we'd have a loop going through there, but good, good connectivity, good access. Uh, some of the conditions, and it's not really relevant to you, but just so you're aware, we've been working with the Highway District, they want us to install a turn lane here, and a turn lane here, and those are some of the issues that we've gone through. Uh, again, those are not necessarily related to you, but they're issues we've been working with the Highway District on in our, in our traffic study. There are, I believe, seventeen recommended conditions of approval that staff has put forward, we've read through them, we agree with them, we don't take exception to any of them. Cootney County obviously put their standard conditions in there regarding building and making sure the lots meet zoning and that kind of straightforward stuff. Panhandle Health is standard five-acre lots, obviously gotta have a septic system, gotta go through, through their processes. Lakes Highway District had some letters that they writ, written, uh, again, we've gone through that, we've, we've discussed that. Timberlake Fire has reviewed this, uh, and they have some, some conditions in their letter, those are pretty straightforward, and there should be no issues there. We will be required, as Vlad had mentioned, to do a wildfire mitigation plan prior to final plat, uh, we're aware of that, and we will do that study. Uh, Fish and Game has their boilerplate form in there, which talks about bears, and don't feed the bears, and don't feed the wildlife, and make sure your garbage has a lid on it and that kind of stuff. Pretty straightforward, same with DEQ's letter, talks about, uh, noise pollution and dust pollution, but that's a pretty straightforward letter, so we are in agreement with all of those conditions and don't take exception to any of them. I think I'll stand for questions if you have any.
Well, uh, your presentation was thorough in that it answered a lot of the questions I was going to have for you, um, and, yes, I, I think I picked up on the Lakes Highway District and transportation just being a common, uh, issue with, with developments in general. Have you entered into the, um, like in on the acronym...
Road Development Agreement?
Yes, the Road Development Agreement.
No, we will, that's required to do, actually, that gets recorded with the final plat for the first phase, that's one of those steps that we have to go through at the process, it would be a little premature to do that now since we don't have the entitlements for the property, but, uh, that is a condition of Lakes, and so they won't sign the final plat or approve the project until we do that, but that development agreement gets recorded contemporaneously with the final plat.
Yeah, no more questions for you at this time?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So, I believe we have one or two members of the public here who may wish to speak on this. Roger Bussie or Valerie Bussie? Would either of you like to speak this evening? Come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, my name is Roger Bussie, uh, my current address is, uh, four-six-one-five West Prince Town in Coeur d'Alene. But I'm, we're also a property owner on Archer Road, which is why we're here, to see what, you know, what's being proposed. We just bought a piece of property on Archer, uh, we closed on it on April sixth. There's, there's four pieces of property there along Archer Road, one of which is ours. I'm not familiar with Pulaski and how many, uh, lots have access to Pulaski Road, but however many of those are, plus R four, plus the sixty-six they're proposing, we're well over seventy-some lots, right? Which, in my mind, is a hundred and forty cars minimum. So, my big concern here is, it, I think somebody said there's been a highway or a traffic study done, it'd be interesting to see that, if that's available. But those two road extensions that, uh, extend up to the tree farm, if the state highway is not allowing access to the state highway, then what happens if that tree farm gets developed and we add another forty lots or something? How many cars are gonna be coming down Archer? How many cars are be coming down Pulaski, as well as fire trucks, emergency vehicles, et cetera? What's the impact on those roads? I know they're public roads, but, uh, there's gonna be a lot of traffic there, right alongside our piece of property, that's my concern. I understand state highway is difficult to access, but is, you know, somebody said, well, obviously, they're not gonna let us get access, but the question is, have they asked? Can we have access? What if that tree lot gets developed? Can, can there be access, or is everybody gonna be forced down Pulaski and Archer? That's my, and I'd also like to know if that, uh, projected plat that I'm looking at right there, if that's available, I don't know, is that available online, is it, uh, there are copies here tonight available? It'd be interesting, as a property owner.
Actually, not entirely certain what the process for getting you access to that right now, although, vast majority of things eventually do... All right, I, I don't want to eat into your time, uh, you have up to five minutes to comment, um, I'm happy to ask staff after you're done and have them comment on that.
Yeah, but that's the extent of my comments, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a member of staff answer that question really quickly for the gentleman?
Yes, every project is available online, um, I can... Right, I can either print it out or give my, uh, business card and have the gentleman give me a call tomorrow and walk him through our website on how to access each and every document in this file.
Okay.
So, all the exhibits in the file are labeled as applicant's side, staff's side, agency's side, public comment.
Okay, great, and I believe, uh, we have some answers on rebuttal?
Thank you, again, Drew Ditman, Lake City Engineering, for the record, I appreciate Roger's comments, um, I do have an extra copy if you would like it tonight, I'd be more than happy to give it, it is available online on the, on the county's website, as well as the traffic study is available online, so when we did the traffic study with the Highway District, we did contemplate and actually include, uh, daily trips from, from this parcel if it were to develop out at maximum density. If they were to develop that at five-acre lots, what would that do? And that was contemplated in the traffic study and with the design of this road, and again, that's one of the considerations that they're requesting, the Highway District is requesting a turn lane here, uh, and a turn lane on Archer as well, and so that's probably a result of some of that. Uh, the other question was, so Pulaski Road here is almost identical to Archer, there are four lots on Pulaski, there's four lots on Archer, so that was another question. State highway access, I did make a bold comment that the state's not gonna give access, that's my experience, I've been doing this for twenty-five years now, and getting access onto a state highway is very difficult, uh, and, and obviously, safety concern is, is the number one with high-speed traffic, so, um, it's not, not out of the realm of possibilities, but I'm gonna venture to guess that they're not gonna get, if that property were developed, access by the state. not gonna get, if that property were developed, access by the state. And I don't know if that prop, we don't own that property, so I don't know if that property owner has asked the state yet or not, but just again, in my experience, you're not gonna get it from the state. I think I answered all the questions.
You did?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just a quick double-check that there's no one else from the public who wishes to comment, or anyone else who's connected via Zoom?
No one else on Zoom. What I can do, just as a brief aside to elaborate on that question, just for everyone in attendance and for the record, on our website, kcgov.us, if you navigate to the planning page, which you can do by going to government and clicking on planning, and scrolling down to this button, project search, if you click on that, it'll default to this, project number contains, and if you search by project number, this one was MSP two-one-dash what? Oh. Twenty-dash what? Zero-zero-zero-two. If you enter the project number and click enter, you can click on the result, and every attachment related to this project, including all of the applicant's exhibits, agency comments, et cetera, is available for the public, and I just wanted to demonstrate that for anyone who's interested.
Great, thank you very much, and with that, it is six fifty-two PM, and I will close the hearing for MSP twenty-dash zero-zero-zero-two. You all have a good night.